Hey everybody, just give me one moment while Matthew and I figure out how to make this work correctly. We will be with you shortly. Hey Karen, how are you? We will be with you in just a moment, I'm waiting for Matthew to show up. His app needs a little updating, we'll get this all worked out, no problem. Hey Heather, how are you? We will be starting in just a moment, just waiting for Matthew to update his app so we can get started. We'll get there. Sorry for the delay, first time, next time it'll be a lot more smooth. Alright, in the meantime, how y'all doing? How's everybody doing here? Hey Heather, I see Matthew has said hi. Let's see, yes, Matthew approved. Says it's adding you. Ah, there you are!
Hey!
Hey! I can hear you.
Oh good!
Yeah!
Turn on light here, there we go, you can really get my shiny forehead into the frame here, so...
See if we could like puff it up.
Yeah, I put a little powder on earlier, but...
Little TV makeup?
Mm-hmm, yeah, I'm prepared, so, how you doing?
I'm good, how are you?
Good, 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 just enjoying beautiful like summer-like weather here in sunny Denver, so I won't rub it in, but...
No, please don't, it's getting there here in Maine, but not quite, I still have spring allergy colds, so I do apologize. Yay!
Yay allergies, so, well good.
Yeah, we're actually here for a particular reason, not just to talk weather. I want to take my Level 2 Cicerone, which we'll get into what that means in a little bit, so... That's what we're gonna do, like for the few months, right?
Absolutely.
Do all that stuff.
Absolutely, it's, you know, it's a fun thing to get involved with, I enjoy it, I mean it's studying, it's a lot of work, but it's kinda cool, so... I figured today we'd just kinda like talk about the basics of what is the Cicerone program? And kinda give you a lay of the land and then kinda set you on a course for getting started and then kinda... You know, each time we talk, we'll dive into a different section and maybe talk specifics about stuff, so hopefully that'll help.
Yeah, that sounds, yeah, that sounds really great, um, I am trying to pull up, you sent these really amazing notes and I was like, oh my goodness, that's so much for a half hour.
Well, I kinda broke it down into just basically, you know, a bunch of different segments, like what is Cicerone? Why should I do the Cicerone? Who should study for it? What are the segments? What are the different, uh, different exams that you take? What does the exam look like for the certified and each of the exams? And then, you know, what kind of resources can I or anyone use to study for the exam? So, um, yeah, I can, I can just dive in.
Yeah, let's do it, we've got a lot to cover in a quick time, I'm probably, I'm not, I've got my paper, I've got my pen, but I'm not really good at just taking notes, so I'm going to probably interrupt you 700 times.
Very good, so, yeah, do that please, I mean it's kinda, I can just flap my gums for however long you need me to, but yeah, asking questions is always good. But, Cicerone program was started by Ray Daniels and he's like an old school beer guy, he used to be the, I think he was the editor-in-chief for Zimmerman Magazine, which is the Brewers Association magazine. He's a Harvard Business School grad and he's been involved in a bunch of different projects, but Cicerone started in 2007, was I think one of...
Okay, wait a second, I'm already gonna stop, I say Cicerone, you say Cicerone?
No, Cicerone, no, I might have thrown in, I might have thrown in an extra accent on there just to be fancy, but, uh, yeah, it's Cicerone.
We like fancy.
I'm pretty fancy, so get used to it, but, um, but yeah, Ray started it in 2007, so it's officially about 10 years, they just celebrated, um, in, I guess that was in, in March, early March or something like that, they celebrated their 10th year. But basically his goal is to provide an education, a baseline, kind of following similar guides as like the Sommelier sort of, uh, program.
Which is the wine piece.
Which is the wine, exactly, so, but he broke it down into five kinda key segments, keeping and serving beer, beer styles, beer flavor and evaluation, ingredients and brewing process, and pairing beer and food. So, uh, you know, his goal is to service, uh, you know, the industry as a whole and make beer experience better for everybody, so, um, that's kinda of it in a nutshell. Yeah, yeah, so it's turned out like 10 years later, now there's, um, that's, well, backing up, it's broken into four different, um, segments, so you can get your certified beer server, which I think you already are, the first level.
Yeah!
Right, so that's like, that's like an online course you can take, it's, uh, um, it's like 60 or 70 bucks? And it's a 30-minute, 60-question multiple-choice question, and there's a little, little segment of that about the Cicerone program itself, so, um, but then it goes into certain... Okay, sorry.
I took that one, um, after studying like crazy for like two days and I had had some beer, so I was like, yeah, let's do this.
Perfect, yeah, it's the only way to study.
Yeah, this is the right time to take a test, luckily, that's the best way for me to take tests, I guess.
Sure, well, it's, the great thing about the Cicerone program is that in order to study, you have to drink beer, so, um, I think if you have to, if you have to study anything, I think this is a great way to do it, so... The Cicerone, uh, the certified, there's, after that, there's a certified, uh, Cicerone level, there's the advanced Cicerone and the master Cicerone. So, I think there's almost like 100,000 certified beer servers right now, um, there's like 3,300 certified Cicerone, there's 88 advanced Cicerone, and then there's only 16 master Cicerones. And that's, those are numbers from across 50 countries in the world, so, um...
That's crazy to me.
So, yeah, yeah, there's, there's a lot of certified beer servers, so it's great, I mean it's cool to...
The beer server ones, but then you get up to the, the fact that there's only like 88 of Level 3 and 16 of Level 4, that's intimidating.
It's, it's a lot of work, the advanced, uh, I think they started, it's maybe two or three years old now, um, but it's a, it's a grueling exam, um, but, uh, at the masters, uh... So the certified Cicerone is like a half-day exam, um, it's got, um, multiple choice written, there's a little demonstration you have to do on camera, um, there's tastings, like...
I'm glad that we're practicing this, though.
You'll be a natural, you'll be a natural, so, um, the advanced is a full-day exam, um, and that has one-on-one, uh, segments where you actually interview with, with one of the master Cicerones, or even Ray Daniels himself. And then, uh, the master is two days, um, and that's a lot, it's more like, uh, a third of it is one-on-one kinda interviews and they're just kinda put you to the, to the test, so... Um, I, I haven't taken the master, but the advanced was, was grueling, they, uh, used to have to do it handwritten, but I think now all the Cicerone and certified and advanced exams, you can actually have, uh, like computers you can use to take them, so... That is a lot better, at least for me, because, you know, I don't know about you, but I don't write very much, and so it's, it's like a lot of this as you're, you know, going through the exam.
Yeah, and then if you have really bad penmanship, it'd be like, eh, it's like, maybe this is right, but...
Exactly, I'm sure I would have been perfect, gotten a perfect score had I had a computer, so, yeah.
Yeah!
It was their fault, it was their fault. But, but, um, you know, who, why should, uh, why should anyone do this? You know, I think, uh, anyone that really has a passion for beer would be interesting for them, um, and setting a goal and kind of, uh, for me anyway, um, helps me, uh, accomplish things, so... Having, if I know the test is coming and people know I'm taking the test, then I'm, then I better study for it and better get to it, but, um, but if you work in any, any aspect of the beer business, I think it really helps you if you're in, you know, beer sales, if you work with a distributor, if you work in retail, if you work bar and restaurants, um, if you work for a brewery, any of those things, um, it helps elevate your game, gives you a common language, gives you, um, the ability to feel confident when you're talking about beer in the marketplace.
See, that's the part that I think I'm gonna have a really hard time with, is this common language, because I'm pretty sure that I just have my own language, and so trying to like break it, like, we may be saying the same exact thing, but I'm probably not using the same word, I probably made up about 10.
Well, that's good, I mean as long as other people understand what you're talking about and it's, it's evocative and creative and it, and it, uh, and it's meaningful. Then I think it's, uh, I think it's useful, and I think, you know, when you study these things, there's, there's materials that are, uh, put out by, uh, the Cicerone program and by Randy Mosher, and, and those guys have a, have a language to describe certain things, so I think once you kinda pick up on some of that language, um, it helps, uh, it helps you, uh, you know, evolve your vocabulary and, and just the way you think and talk about things, and... But there's plenty of room for creativity and they actually, they actually promote that too, so, um, they, they like, uh, meaningful and evocative terms when you're describing your beers or flavors or, you know, that sort of stuff, so...
Yeah, I, I, I have a hard time with flavors of beer, there's certain beers out there, um, like Mass Landing, they make this amazing peanut butter stout, and everybody gets peanut butter, and I don't. Like, I know that's so wrong, but I get like this straight-up Tootsie Roll, and I think it's delicious, but people are like, what are you talking about, why can't you taste the peanut butter?
Well, what's, what, I think what, 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 what practicing this sort of thing does is knowing that there's that flavor in that beer that you identify as Tootsie Roll, but other people describe it as peanut butter, so that you know you're talking about the same thing, and then you can relate to it in the terms that somebody else might, else might understand it, and, and when you're describing it, um, you can say, I personally get Tootsie Roll, a lot of people get, um, this peanut butter flavor of this beer, and it, it kinda brings people together and, uh, helps you kinda understand where everybody's coming from, so, um, just being able to identify, uh, that, that flavor, maybe to me it tastes like, you know, burnt rubber or something like that, but I know most people taste peanut butter, so, as long as I know that, I can kinda communicate that, so...
Yeah, I hope that that's not a thing that actually happens for you, I hope that you don't, it tastes like burnt rubber.
Very rarely, yeah, unless I'm licking it off a tire or something like that, but...
Um, if that's a thing that you find yourself doing often enough, you should stop.
That's good advice, that's good advice, and, yeah, I, I'm trying to cut it back a little bit, but, you know, like, it's, it's a problem, it's a problem, so... Well, um, so yeah, 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 so, um, I do, and I don't wanna talk about it anymore, it's, it's tough.
Let's move on then, I understand.
Okay, um, so yeah, anybody in the industry, uh, anybody that cares about beer, um, I think could benefit by, by taking part in this, you know, I think a lot of people who work in the business, um, know a lot of stuff, um, but this also just kinda rounds you out, and there's always something to be learned, um, no matter what program, if you're studying by yourself, or, you know, if you're going through this program, there's always a new depth, a new level of, of understanding about the different things that, um, that we deal with on a daily basis, and, like, for me, the more you know about something, the more interesting it becomes, so... And there's something for everybody in this, you know, there's the science, there's history, there's art, uh, there's culture, um, so depending on what your interests are, there's, there's a little bit of something, I think, for, for everybody who's kind of interested in this, this thing, beer, so...
Yeah, and, um, that actually, that's actually a good place to say, if you actually know anyone that would find our conversation about the Cicerone program and what it takes to, um, study and pass these tests, then feel free to share this out amongst all of your people, um, I'm here with Matthew Geary, we didn't properly introduce ourselves because we had, um, some technical difficulties, but first time, there's always technical difficulties.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, uh, you know, a little, a little slow when it comes to technologies, so, working on it.
It's alright, we'll get you there.
I'm here!
You're here, you made it, uh, so, Matthew Geary, he's out in the middle of the country, working on beer education for...
For Miller Coors, so...
Miller Coors, I was gonna say that, but I was like, if I say the wrong one...
Yeah, that would be, that would be interesting, but, but yeah, yeah, I'm a trade brewer is what they call, so I do, uh, work in beer education, uh, across, uh, Miller Coors, uh, I'm one of six of us in the country, and we are kinda broken out by, uh, geographical region, but we educate, um, all of our sales staff, or anybody in the organization, also our distributor partners, and, you know, our retailers and anybody else who's really kind of interested, so we'll, we have, uh, a lot of different events here in our region, but we also do, uh, um, a couple of different, uh, week-long classes, um, that are, it's kind of like a Beer 101 and a 201 that we teach as well too, so... It's a fun job, but, uh, you know, I grew up in the, in the beer industry and my, my folks started Maine's first brewery about 100 years ago, I know, it was 35 years ago, and, uh, so I always, my, my one joke is that, um, I've got beer in my blood, whether it's genetics or consumption, so, um...
Well, there you go, yes, uh, your, your dad DL and your mom behind, beside him, um, really helped Maine beer, and so we're very appreciative, uh, appreciative to your family and all you've done here, and now we get to talk about beer, my name is Amanda, for all of you that don't know me, and I do Great Beer Adventure, which is, um, a, a learning platform about beer and travel, and I don't know exactly how to describe it, there's a podcast and all these videos, and, yeah, but we're gonna be joining each other on Wednesdays, at noon my time, 11:00 AM your time, and whatever else time it is around.
Right, right, so, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, alright, so, share it away to people that you think might actually wanna learn some more about this, which, there's art, history, science, all these parts and pieces about beer, so, yeah.
Sure, so yeah, I mean, um, so yeah, so, so the, the exam, um, is, uh, is about a four-hour exam with some short, short essays, short answers, there's a tasting portion, um, and, uh, there's a whole syllabus, so, um, what we can do, I don't know, can we, is there like link below to the syllabus or anything, can we do that here or no?
We can, is there a website, I should be, let me look it up.
Yeah, well, yes.
If I had a known.
I, I should have, I should have been prepared, but what, I can fill in some notes, I can fill in some notes afterwards, but it's, uh, you know, just cicerone.org.
Dot org slash syllabus?
Well, just, yeah, it's maybe here, let me see if I can pull it up, if I can, can do this, if I can multitask here, but in any case, there's a syllabus there, and it's broken down into the five different categories I mentioned below, keeping and serving beer, you know, that's things like purchasing and accepting, you know, responsible service, um, draft, basics of draft systems and, and care for draft systems and cleaning, um, what, what a beer clean glass looks like, um, bottles, you know, the difference between a green glass bottle, a clear bottle, brown bottle, um, and, uh, you know, basically, information that, that leads us to, um, getting the best quality product to the marketplace and taking care of beer, so it's, it's, uh, put in the best, there you go, in the best, uh...
I think I did it!
Impressive, impressive.
I'm really impressed with myself right now, I don't know how I did that.
That was good, that was good, on the fly, no, um, so, keeping, keeping and serving beer, um, and then there's beer styles, so that's like everything, you know, if you go, basically, they, they break it down geographically, so there's, uh, there's British styles, so that's everything from a dry Irish stout to a sweet stout to English porter to, you know, an English IPA and, uh, you know, strong bitters, that sort of stuff, and then Germany or German area, you know, uh, continental Europe styles, and then American styles are, are kinda the three areas, um, but this is, um, a lot of this information comes from the BJCP, the, the Beer Judge Certification Program Style Guidelines 2015. So, it's a, it's a document you can also download, um...
So, wait, 2015, so beer's been added since then, so...
Yeah, yes.
Just recently, New England IPA has been included into an official style, so is that not part of the test at this point?
So that's the Brewers Association, that's a different, um, group, and that's, that's so that you can be, that, that's part of the GABF, um, the Great American Beer Festival in Denver.
There's so many others!
I know, I know, I know, it's, it's, it's crazy, but, yeah, so that's, that's like so that when the GABF has their, you know, they have like their gold, silver, and bronze medals for each category, that's so that those, those beers falling within that style will actually have a place to, to win this year, so, and as you know, it's a hugely popular style, so, I think they have, they have an IPA and a double IPA, I don't know if they have like a knowing wooden pail or not, but, um, in any case, that's that, and I think, I suspect the next, uh, edition of the BJCP will, um, will include probably a hazy IPA, I'm not sure, but...
How many, like how often do they update the BJCP?
It was 2011 and then 2015, so maybe in another four years, but they update the styles, but the exam is based on the BJCP 2015, so if you're taking it, if you're studying, you will wanna use that as your guideline, um, and, uh, basically what you need to do is memorize each style, and, and, uh, the, uh, the SRM, the Standard Reference Method, that's the color of the beer, it's on a scale of, uh, 0 to 40, 0, or 1, 1 being kind of a, a light, very light, light grass color, pale, pale, um, straw color, and 40 being basically opaque black, um, then you need to, uh, memorize the IBU range, the International Bittering Units, which is just the, a measurement of the bitterness of each style, and then the, uh, the ABV, the Alcohol By Volume range for each style as well, so, plus, you need to memorize, uh, three different commercial, uh, examples of each style too, so, um, it's a lot, and I think that's a great place to start, because it can be grueling, I don't know, some people are great at memorizing things, to me, I just have to pound it into my head so I can remember them, um, so that's a, that's a great part, uh, place to start is going through those styles, reading everything, understanding everything, and also memorizing those quantities, so, um, for every style.
Memorization is horrendous.
Yeah, and, uh, uh, I, basically what I did was I just made a Excel spreadsheet and then filled in all the information for each style, and then kinda, uh, hid the columns and tested my memory and went back and did it a million times until it was stuck in my brain, so, um, but that's, that's probably...
Oh, sorry, um, so in our, in our notes that you have, um, so it looks like I'm being like really rude, because I keep like looking away from our conversation, but my computer's below, so I apologize for that.
No, no problem.
You had mentioned that there are some different resources, and did you ever use, there, I see these cards that have like the color and the name and the style, and it's supposed to help, like flashcards or something, have you used those at all?
I did, I bought those, and I didn't use them, to be honest, they're useful for some people, but for me, I preferred the, you know, the reading and the spreadsheet sort of thing, um, because it's plugging in, it's like writing it down, flashcards are good to have, you know, as your, you know, if you're, you know, riding the bus or something like that, you know, that's, that's, uh, I don't know how often you ride the bus, but if you were, you know, for commuting, yeah, okay, well, if you're in a big city, if you took the train or something like that, that might be useful for them, but, um, but I'm more of a, I learn a little bit differently, I need to kinda interact with it a little bit more, um, because I, I'll just zone, zone out if I'm looking at a flashcard, but they're useful for people, um, some people learn that way, so, if you find that you are...
Yeah, I feel like the color piece is the part that, like actually being able to see the colors, because I can kind of, you know, in my head think, okay, so one is really light, 40 is really black, but then like what do they consider in the middle of that?
Yeah, no, definitely for the, for the, having a, having a reference, you know, and how the, each style fits into each other, I think is a good way to, to look at it, and having that visual reference is useful for sure, um, and, uh, I do, I do look at it that way too sometimes when I'm studying, and, and, you know, I think if it's helpful for you, those, those visual references, you should definitely not hesitate to do it, um, the Randy Mosher's, uh, tasting beer has some great visuals, uh, in it, yeah, I think I have it here too, this is the, the, the second edition, uh, he just put out, but it's got, it's got a lot of...
I've got the not second edition.
Yeah, um, the, the second edition is nice, because it's got expanded, uh, section on beer and food pairing, um...
Yeah, I realized that, like somebody was looking at theirs, I'm like, I don't even have that page, like, where did it come from?
But he like, he does cool stuff like, um, you know, where you have, you have visuals, um, and descriptors kind of all rolled into one, so it just kinda gives, he's a visual person, I think he's a, he's a graphic artist by, by trade, so he, he does it really good at, at using, uh, putting information into kind of those infographics sort of things, so, like another example of just kind of putting beer into, I don't know if you can, hey, look at that! So putting, putting stuff into context, um...
Okay, yeah, you can see that I really like dived deep into this book, I've tried so many times to use it, like right before I go to bed to like read, like, okay, I'm gonna read a couple pages, and I'm like, I don't think right before bed is the right time for me.
Yeah, maybe not, maybe not, you've, you've got kids, right, so that, that's enough to like pull the life out of you and make you sleep, the sleep of the dead, so, um...
Yeah, and you just read for like a minute, and you're like...
Yeah, I fall asleep reading stories to my kids, so I mean, it's, it's just, it's pointless, and so...
Yeah, we're, um, we're reading like some really exciting stuff right now, so like Harry Potter, I can't fall asleep to that, Harry Potter.
I, uh, I, I tell my son, hey, you want me to read you some beer stories, like, no, you're gonna put me to sleep!
Like, that's the point.
Yeah, no beer, yeah, no, great idea, that's, uh, um, another great resource, um, is, uh, the Oxford Guide to Beer, um, this guy, Garrett Oliver, who's, uh, the master brewer at Brooklyn Brewery, he, uh, edited this, but it's got, it's basically like a dictionary, beer dictionary, so everything, you know, if you wanted to look up hops and learn a little bit about overview of hops, or if you wanted to learn about a basic history of English porters, you could go in and read that segment, or if you wanted to learn what, um, Alpha Amaleis was, you could go and, and learn about that, so, it's a, it's a great resource and just top-line information and, uh, um, and yeah, it's a must, a must-have, I think, for studying for the Cicerone guide, so, um, it's, covers, kind of all-encompassing sort of thing.
Okay, so I'll put that on the list.
Mm-hmm, um, so we've got Tasting Beer by Randy Mosher, uh, the Oxford Companion to Beer, uh, edited by Garrett Oliver, the BJCP, the 2015 version, that you can download for free online.
We like free.
Yeah, that one's awesome, um, the Brewers Association publishes, publishes a draft manual, um, and that's free as well, and you can go online and download that, and that has everything you could possibly need to know about draft systems, so it goes into more, yeah...
I'm gonna go into that, because I'm having some serious trouble with my draft system right now at my house, yeah, so I'm gonna just go download that and go...
Yeah, absolutely. And it is cool. Like I, what I love about the, the draft stuff is it's like a real tangible thing. Like there's a solution. There's a science behind it. There's math involved and it won't ask you to go into that detail on the exam. There'll be stuff like, how do you, how often should you clean it? How do you clean it? What's the best way to clean it? How do you take apart like a beer faucet and, and those things, sort of things? So it won't go into too much depth, but that, that Brewers Association Draft Beer Quality Manual will be a great resource for everyone to do.
And that's available online as well.
Yeah, free. If you just type it in, if you go to the Brewers Association, or if you just type in Draft Beer Quality Manual, it'll pop up and you can download it for free. I'd recommend printing it out because it's useful to have these things. Both the BJCP, I printed out, just I, again, I'm old fashioned and I don't like to, to read on a device. I'd rather have something that I can like underline and highlight and scribble notes on and that sort of stuff. So. So for me, that's what I did. And then the Cicerone program provides its own, kind of books, which is nice because it uses the language that they'll use in the exam. So, if you can afford those, and I'm not sure what the prices are on those, but if you can afford those, there's three different ones. There's one on keeping and serving, which includes draft. Nice thing about them, they have segments in the book where you can actually do exercises and it does, has a little review quizzes at the end. So.
Like stretches, like.
Right. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Some, some side bends, some torso twists and things like that. Those are, those are brewers exercises. Yep.
Yeah.
Good.
We have to make sure that like every once in a while, we get up from our beer.
That's right.
Exercise.
Right. I recommend really heavy glassware. So you get, you know, a little extra resistance. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Makes sense.
Big mass crew or whatever. So, yeah. So, yeah, bad, bad. But anyway, they have, they have those, they have those books to buy. If you, if you're, if you got the budget for it, they're useful to have. So I recommend it for those who, who can afford it. So. I mean, I think those, those there are the most important ones that you can, that you can get. And will get you most of the information that you'll need for the exam. There's a few others that I think, for beer and food, Garrett Oliver did the Brewmaster's Table and that's a great way. He, he uses very evocative language. Do, yeah, it's, it's good. He's, he, he's great. It's a lot of fun to read the way he describes, you know, the, the battle between the hops and the sweetness of a, you know, of a dish. And it's, he, he's, he's, he's very creative in the way he, he speaks about it. And it's, it's a lot of fun to read. So it's a good one to pick up.
My study plan for that segment is to actually like start cooking some food and drinking some beer.
Yeah, that's, that's great. Yeah. And I think, I think a lot of thi, a lot of this too, is a lot of, a lot of people do this and, and drinking and, and, having different styles of beer and cooking, just being mindful about what you're doing. Take the time to slow down and think about the flavors of the beer. Maybe take some notes on it. Look at the brewery, where it comes from, the history of that style. You know, look at everything kind of encompassing what you're going to be doing anyway. And just be more mindful about it. So I think it's a, it's a good exercise to kind of, be in the moment and then actually, you know, get something out of it too, that will help you towards this goal of passing the exam. So.
So on, on that note, we're, we're running out of time here this week. My goal is to be prepared to take the exam in August in Boston. That's, that's my goal. With that in mind, we're gonna meet weekly as often as we can. This time slot on Wednesdays. And we're gonna talk about something different each week. What do we have coming up next week?
So next week, so first, your first homework.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you, what's my homework?
Make sure you get all these resources, get all the ones you can together. Kind of get your library together so we can start doing that. And you're, I think next week, what we can do is we can start, you know, at the top of the, the syllabus, we'll talk about keeping and serving beer. And we'll go, we'll go through as kind of as much as we can. And we'll kind of, I guess we'll kind of see how, how the time works and what we can cover. And how in-depth we want to get on certain things. And maybe there's, I'm sure there's certain things that we can gloss over pretty quickly and other stuff we want to kind of dive into. So, so next week, keeping and serving beer, basic stuff like purchasing and accepting, kind of rules around serving alcohol, how you store beer, packaging a beer, that sort of stuff. So we'll kind of dive into the, the top line of that. And anybody that wants to follow along with us, please do. I know.
Please do. Yeah.
I know a few people that are also studying for, for it coming up. So hopefully that can be helpful, at least providing a guideline and maybe some structure for folks to, to kind of study and, and get a start and feel in control of this, of this whole crazy thing. Cause it's kind of a big thing to undertake. So.
It really is. It's, you know, it's one of those things where actually the, here in Maine, the lovely people over at Foundation, they have a little study group going. And they invited me to come study with them. The only problem was, is I got this great opportunity to have a radio show at the exact same time. Which I was like, yeah.
No.
So if you guys want to listen, it's WMPG. It's, it streams live, one o'clock on Tuesdays.
Awesome. I'm there.
Yeah. So I'm doing that, but this is really important to me. So I'm trying to find time in my life to make sure that this occurs. Cause I'm one of those like learning nerds where, I have my master's degree for no reason.
Well, good.
Now I have to have my level two Cicerone because.
For a good reason, I think, right? You'll, you'll use it all the time. So, and eventually, once we get past kind of the, the less sexy stuff like keeping and serving beer and get into like tasting beer, describing beers, that, that'll be a little more fun.
Then it becomes fun.
Right, right. So we gotta get through the, the drudgery first before we can get into the fun stuff. So. So hang in there. We'll get there and it'll all be worthwhile. So.
All right. So next week, keeping and serving beer homework is to get your resources. We'll actually write in the comments, we'll make a list of the ones that you put together so people can go and hunt those down if they want to.
Sounds good. Yeah. Let's do that. Okay.
Perfect. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Don't, don't delete, do not delete this app so that next week it's easier.
It's the, the Facebook, right? Is that?
It is the Facebook. Yeah, that's what it's called. The Facebook.
Okay. I'll try to remember that. So.
All right.
All right.
Well, thank you so much, Matthew.
Thank you.
Everybody. We'll see you next week.
See you next week. Cheers. Bye.
Bye.